Good evening, everybody. I'm calling our council meeting to order. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I present the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, ever since Rome.
Thank you. Erin, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Adrian.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Moynor.
Here.
Councilmember Sherber.
Here.
All right, everybody's here tonight. Um, first thing, um, are there any changes to the agenda or anything we need to move around?
I know corrections are changing.
I move to approve of the agenda as presented.
Okay, we're here a second.
I'm agreeing with him.
Any further discussion? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
All right. Next, it's our public input time. Uh, please come to the podium and state your name and address. For the record, before proceeding with any comments, individual remarks are limited to five minutes, but the overall public impair- input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings law, the city can ta- city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period, which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public input period and we will move on to the consent agenda. First item on the consent agenda is I need a motion to approve the minutes from the August eleventh, city council meeting. I need a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-three approving the bills and expense reports. Next, I need a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the city reports and minutes. Uh, we have the library board, airport committee, and P and Z. Next, I need a motion to approve the request of Devon Brooks to bow hunt deer on a property owned by Merlin Habertake at eight thirty-two Tanglewood Drive, and that is within the city limits. Next, there's a motion to approve the sale, um, to dispose of the inoperable two thousand thirteen Chevy Tahoe, which was used as our K nine unit. Um, I believe there's a memo from Chief Davis that explains Strawberry Building has offered two hundred and fifty dollars to acquire the vehicle. Next, I need a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-four, and that authorizes a city clerk to make the listed transfers for fiscal year that ends June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, and those are included as part of the budget. However, the city auditors have recommended the city council also approve them for resolution. Those are all the items. I'll take a motion in a second and then open it up for discussion.
I move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
The transfers, there was nothing out of the ordinary from what we approved during the budget process. I tried to put a description there for you of, of what each one was for, and just as a refresher and for, for those that are listening, um, the state buyer requires us to receive monies into certain funds. For example, hotel motel tax has to go into the general fund, and then we do what is called a subsequent transfer to the areas that were identified in the ordinance of where that money needs to go. Very similar with local option sales tax. We have to reseed it into a local option sales tax fund, but then we transfer that money out to street projects and to, uh, the bikeway walkways as was voted on by the people, so. But again, these were all part of the, uh, budget process when we went through that.
I just had a question about the bow hunting. Is they're kind of following the same protocols that we did when we did the upon the Shermans?
Devon Brooks was the first one we approved, uh, beer bill, and so the area he's looking for is along the Dakota River, right on the edge of the city limits.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right, Linda?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
All right. Next, we'll go on to our regular agenda items. The first item tonight, I need a motion to proceed with the second consideration and adoption ordinance five, and that's amending the provisions of the city code pertaining to rental housing, and this is in regards to the adding infestations, I believe, to the, um, I know we had a meeting with the, um, or we had an open house with rent, or landlords here just this past Monday night. I need a motion for a second, or, and then we can open up for discussion and vote from there, or did you want to talk about it first? I'll let you guys decide.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the second consideration.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion or comments?
I thought it was a good meeting we had. Really felt that it gave people a chance to ask questions and see what the possibilities were for them, and so I thought that using the idea of deal for house was good, and I think we should continue with that when we have a situation like this, where people can just run and ask their questions.
Jim Shaw was here, was able to give us advice on his experience of, you know, what he's done to, uh, rid those out of his apartments, getting additional information from him, and of course, he uses Terminix. You know, obviously, there are other infestation groups out there, stuff like that, but getting a better understanding, what's the best way to eliminate that test because it is a difficult way once it's invested. So, uh, working with Jim Peters, providing a model that they can use for appendix into their, uh, lease agreements to help identify who's at fault here, or not fault, but who's, uh, responsible or taking charge of cleaning that up. I think that helps give the landlords a little bit more teeth in their, uh, lease agreements to address some of the issues they see.
I think again, bringing it down was pretty good.
Yeah.
So we should, you know, have to work it out regardless, though.
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Um, Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next, um, we've got some discussion here. Pleasers are here tonight to talk to us about, um, some potential having glass recycling. Is that correct?
Yes. My name's Jack O'Brien, like Pleasner Sanitation. We've had requests from residents, um, all over our service area, but Manchester as well, for an option to recycle glass, um, for a long time. Doesn't work curbside because of some safety issues. We can't have shattered glass and the other stuff, but we do want to come up with a solution. Um, the landfill in Dubuque, which is part of your as a service area, uh, has an agreement with, I think it's called Rumble Glass out of Kansas City. They're picking it up, uh, for no charge. We just have to get it to Dubuque. Uh, and we need to have a container for it. So our proposal is that we split the cost of the container. It's about set twelve thousand dollars total. Um, we're requesting five thousand dollars, and then as long as we have the city contract with the city of Manchester, we will take care of calling that to Dubuque, and then at that point, that's the landfill. We'll take care of getting it to the recycler. We're hoping that as soon as we order this, we can have it here, ready to go within about a month, so.
Will it be at the transfer station, or where will it be then?
We're thinking it would be at the lot that we own right by the city lot, where the cardboard recycling is currently.
Are they going to put more of these up then out in the county, or is this going to be the only one for now that you want?
Right now, we're having to work with individual municipalities, um, so this would be the only one in Delaware County for now.
But Bill and I are with the Delaware County solid waste. It might be something we could potentially come back and put a-
Right.
Talk to you about another location.
As I remember at that meeting, uh, the gentleman from Dubuque did mention, I think they make a smaller version compared to the one they have over at Tyson's in Dubuque.
They do. Ours, I think, would be a little smaller than that. Um, they don't fill up that fast. It's just the glass that goes in there, so the size isn't the problem, but the cost is really the same. I mean, smaller containers aren't much cheaper than a container that's twice the size of what they have, so that's why we want like this.
And I, I know at that time, there was some mentioned that part of Delaware County solid waste would pick up part of that tab. And that what it was in our meeting?
We had talked about it, yeah, that solid waste would be interested if it were accounting wide.
And I'm sure this still wouldn't be open to anybody, it was just a case of, of that. Will this be an open, open container, or will be?
There'll be slots, um, about the size of a wine bottle. That's about the biggest thing that should go in it, so that's, um, why we do that. Wine bottles, um, I have a list here. Uh, cosmetics, candle jars, food containers. Um, the big one that they do point out is light bulbs cannot go in it.
Light bulbs.
Yeah, Pyrex. Pyrex.
If I remember, Pyrex can't go in. Pyrex is a-
Yep, like bakeware.
Bakeware, yep.
And then this is straight from the landfill. They have a pretty easy to follow thing, so we can get this to you guys.
They probably have it posted on the, the container too.
Yeah, they have it plastered all over the container.
I saw the one that said Tyson's in Dyersville, and it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's neat.
Yeah.
The hole is only this big.
Yep.
And the nice thing is, if it's over there, the biggest problem I remember the gentleman told us was they have an issue. A lot of times people want to shove the cardboard in with the glass. He said they still have a little bit of issue with that, but if cardboard's right next to it, they shouldn't have, yeah, exactly.
Because they don't have, it's only glass at Tyson's in Dyersville, so you guys can have a one-stop shop, hopefully.
Yeah, just because the cardboard bend is right next to glass, I think there's a world full of women that'll tell you their husband won't throw their laundry in the laundry basket, but next to it is fine. You know what I mean? I agree, and that's what they spoke about in the meeting, you know, that it's always kind of been an issue, but for the most part, since they went to a smaller hole, he's like, and much more better labeling, it's really made a huge difference. You know, if the other one's next to it and say cardboard, 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 hopefully people will catch on. I, my wife is constantly looking for a place to get rid of glass. She feels bad that we have to put it in the landfill.
Drawing it regarding, drives me crazy.
You know, but they explained to you, glass really doesn't hurt a land, does, at, but once it crushes down, it's not harmful to the environment. But these guys are taking it and, I think they're turning it back into beer bottles.
Mostly beer bottles. I don't know if they have some like Boulevard Brewing out of Kansas City, but they do all recycle bottles, I guess, so they're taking it.
Will this just be for Manchester residents, or a lot of people have been stepping into?
We'd probably say it's for Manchester residents for now. If this is what you guys are doing, if we expand to accounting-wide option, we could talk about, you know, if you guys just think one location, that, that would kind of be up to you.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's not going to be something that's going to be super easy to lease, but we can say it's Manchester.
Yeah, I mean, you don't go into Ry or Royal Hill or Delhi or whatever, as long as you know where it's at. I just didn't know with the fact that what we had discussed at our previous meeting, that Mike had said something about maybe that solid waste would take care of part of it, you know, with the option of looking into.
Yeah, part of it or part of another, I can't recall it exactly.
Yeah. I mean, to me, I think it's a great deal. I, you know, I mean, I know it's five thousand, and probably sitting in our budget, but then again, I don't want to step out of line and say, oh, solid waste was going to pick up part of it, and we were paying for part of it, or how that was working.
To me, it's worth our five thousand to do this. So what I would suggest is if you guys can get some money out of
County.
the county to do it.
Or solid waste.
Or solid waste, yeah.
Yeah.
Then give us Pleasers, because they're doing a great job for us. I think that we can handle the five thousand out of our budget because we've already figured out how to do it, and so I would prefer to, if we can, refund some money to refund it into a business that I know would lose its wealth. So to me, I would rather us spend the five and then whatever you can get out of the solid waste.
I, I think the clear, you know, like clarification would be that if solid waste did put money into it, then it would be open to all of the county.
Right.
Not that it's not going to be, it's moving, because we're not going to lease it necessarily, but that would be the expectation, I think, of solid waste put money into it.
Yeah.
It hopefully keeps it out of everybody's wishes, uh, like yards and everything else.
And it's worth it.
So do we need to do a checking yet before we go and do that on this?
I think we're okay to go ahead, because I think-
The council can decide if you want it, Manchester only, because you're putting money into it, for Manchester. And solid waste agency wants to have a second container, they can put one together and put it someplace else, but because this is going to be placed in Manchester, and our residents would probably be the primary beneficiary of it. That's the way I would look at this.
And Jack, I think you said that right now Pleasers is just looking to work with, with individual cities at this point, or?
Yeah, so we started with, um, Manchester and Independence, which is not even your county, so, um, but certainly we're open to working with the county waste agency if, if they want to contribute to a container and we place it in Hurville or wherever. Um, yeah, we're, we're kind of rolling this out because it's something that people ask more all over the place, so you guys are the lucky guinea pigs that we're starting with.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we give five thousand dollars to this, um, and if you mark indicated as a Manchester-only. We know it's not going to work, but let's try it that way. That's Manchester only, yeah. But thank you for doing this. I really appreciate it.
When Pleasers and the city of Manchester no longer have a contract together, who takes the dumpster?
Dumpster would be ours, um, mainly because we, as we get going on these, they'll be swapped around. We can't guarantee that your same dumpster is, um-
Right, because I figure you'd probably pick one up and leave one behind to take it and transport it.
Exactly.
Otherwise, we'll be unprotected for a little while.
Yeah, so there's proposals that we would own a dumpster. Um, your city contract runs through the end of next year, so about a year and a half. Obviously, we hope to be here for a long time, so.
Yes, I will second that too, Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Thank you. Um, Bill, or excuse me, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, um, I need a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-five, and that's approving the preliminary and final plat of the Winland Second subdivision located at eighteen fifty-two two hundred and fifteenth Street. You want to speak to this, Tim?
Yeah, as you may know from the maps, this is just on the edge of town. Uh, they're splitting lot up. I think they're getting ready for estate planning. Um, so it's just turning lot two into four lots. Um, so there'll be, one lot already has a house on it. Um, pasture ground, uh, is on another lot. Actually, lot four, lot three are pastures. Uh, with lot four having some of the tree forest area on there, not by a vacant lot this time, there's a forest area on there.
And P and Z has reviewed this.
P and Z has reviewed this, and they are recommending it's approval.
All of that land sits in the big dump?
Outside the sewers, just outside. Right on the west edge of that lot, three, four, and, uh, five.
It was old Bishop's tree farm.
But we do not have gone up the sewer yet, correct? Is that what I read?
That's correct. They do, every lot has access to public right-of-way. There is not sanitary sewer down two hundred and fifteenth street past the city limits, because recent court is last city street, and we'll go to the edge, we'll pass that to the edge of the property language, I think it's almost about five, if you look at it. Everything else has availability based off of, uh, what we use. Street would hit, uh, lot three. Lot four is off of two hundred and fifteenth street on the far east side, and the rest of them are two hundred and fifteenth street or, um, really dry. No, that's a Delaware.
Do we have plans and annexes in the zone?
Of course.
Love you.
Well, uh, I understand there is an op- an offer on lot three that would potentially be an extension of the subdivision, of these subdivision. Um, not sure what the rest of the conditions are and the rest of them, but I understand there is interest on lot three for sure.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Okay. What, what, you're not confused? No, you're right. Which is what really what confuses me.
We have a motion. Do I, do I hear a second? Any further discuss- discussion or question? Erin, go ahead.
I'm confused.
Okay.
So we're, we're proving the preliminary and final plat to land that we don't have control over?
It's within the two-mile ex-territorial, so we jurisdiction to the city.
And within two miles and a half.
So that's how we can protect our corporate limits and future land use and growth.
And then we got, um, somebody's got a bid on lot three.
They, they have expressed a lot of interest, yeah.
Which then would hook up to the other, that's already there.
So, sounds like somebody's getting some neighbors.
They're not by the other thing.
All right, now, now I'm nice and used.
Okay. Any other question? All right, Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Next, I need a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-six, and that will approve the preliminary and final plat of the Carrusco. Did I say that correct?
Yes.
Fourth subdivision. Mr. Schulte would like to subdivide lot B of the Carrusco third subdivision, except parcel four into four lots, and I'm going to let you continue talking about this.
Yeah, and so again, this is a, we've talked about this a little bit. Uh, so the biggest discussion points we had was in lot C, was that regional detention basin, but also relocating that sanitary sewer line. While we did not come to an agreement on relocating sanitary sewer, so he's about dig around the sewer line, so, uh, it's still protected, but it's supposed to stay in its place. He's got lot one and two that are coming off of West Main Street. Uh, well, the driveway going to lot two will line up with Eleventh Street. Now, we have an agreement with the DOT that permits us to have an access point at that location. There are restricted access points on West Main Street. There was an agreement between the city and the DOT in the nineties on that, so uh, lot two can have access off West Main Street via driveway. We're putting the driveway into sort of the street going into that lot two. Uh, there are easements across the fringes there, or ingress, egress, which counts lot one, two, that ties onto the rest of those, which would include Subway, Dairy Queen, and the rest of the area here. Uh, and then lead is, let me pull it through. Lot D is reserved for future development. So water and sewer are readily available to lot one and two. We have the street there, so there are not public improvement from necessary with subdivision.
Lot two will have a driveway off of?
Off the main street that will line up with South Eleventh Street. Things like, which you did review this and are recommending it's approval.
But once again, I'll make a motion to adopt this.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Any further questions to come? Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next. We need a motion to approve a site plan review. Farmer's Savings Bank is seeking to build a four thousand square foot brick office at twelve hundred Commercial Port, and they're anticipating an investment of one point six million dollars in building and development costs, along with the additional of four to six new employees for the site. Speak more to this, and I believe Randy is here today. Do you have any questions?
Questions, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so this is the site plan, uh, because the, between the, uh, building size and the parking lot area exceeds ten thousand square feet, uh, it had to go funding zoning and suit and administrative review, which we can mine as myself. Um, it didn't quite meet the forty thousand, but it was close enough, and because it's under the seventy thousand, I thought it was best for the council to review this. This is going in and out of the speed of subdivision, just south of the Casey's out there, in the north of, uh, the Cowlstone Hotel. Uh, so there will be additional traffic coming in and out of that location. Again, we will be discussing, uh, an economic development agreement with them in the future. We'll try to get things put together so that they can start construction while the weather's still decent.
I have a question.
Let me take it up.
This place.
I'm Randy Lovett, uh, and Farmer's Savings Bank, Executive Vice President, Chief Director.
I'm just curious why you're facing the front of the building to the west and not to the island.
Just, boy, that, and do you face it to the north. That was our, our dilemma. Uh, the reason we chose to do that is to the design people, they said you need to face the front of the building to where people can enter the building. We can't get off thirteen. This is people, they don't want to enter from the back of a building to get to the front of the business. So that's why we kind of chose that. I don't know if it's the right one for that.
That's not a ask.
We also talked about going up to Casey's, but then we got to get another driveway across there. We just think this one, and, and down the road, I believe that that street will-
Fill in.
Fill in, and then we'll be looking across from other businesses. We're open.
Yeah.
I think we're all certain on that aspect of things.
It's been a long time, so we're excited there's another. Okay, thank you. Building going on.
We're excited.
Yeah.
Somebody jumped the gun and put a sign out there before we went to you guys. It wasn't me.
I understand there'll be a lot of local contractors working on this facility too. I'll make a motion to.
I'll set it up. All right, any further questions or comments?
Just for clarification, so this is going to be going right next to Cowlstone?
No, north on the corner, intersection. So this lot is two and a half acres. They're only using one acre for the development of the bank and parking and drive-through area, so it's on the northern end of that lot. That'll be closer to Casey's. That will be cool.
So that, that J, JTJ Real Estate Investments has that land now, right?
Yeah, so JTJ Real Estate is actually, the bank's owned by Jim, uh, Jeff, Tim, and Julie Jurkens. And we kind of had to do that, so we have to get ready for approval, and there's a time frame, so they suggest have them buy this, get all their approvals, and then you have banked it, but it'll be on the north side. There'll be one and a quarter acres to the southwest if they will. I think west is a good way to go. When it snows, it pours faster. North, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that could be a mess up there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Randy.
I suppose you can put a sign up.
Next, um, I'm looking for a motion to adopt Resolution seventy-seven, and that'll approve and authorize a grant application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for a rural planning grant, and I'll let you speak to this, Tim.
Yeah, we did talk about this a little bit during the whole meeting, uh, trying to get stuff put together. In order for us to be eligible for federal grants or state grants, uh, for housing, we have to have a relevant recent uh, housing impact study or housing study assessment, and so that's what this grant is doing. It's applying for the grants, just assessment to cover that cost. About thirty thousand dollars, twenty thousand will come through the grant, ten thousand will come through the city. We will later have to partner with ISU Extension. That's some outreach here, but that's something we can do. It's an application process. We're not guaranteed, but we want to submit the application. It's due by the end of this week. Uh, so, uh, we have to guarantee, we have ten thousand dollars available to commit towards this project, and that's what this does, is it authorizes us to form a bit of bits of funds.
When was the last time you pulled a housing grant?
A housing assessment? We did two thousand and nineteen.
No, I mean, like, so we're doing this assessment to get the grants?
Oh, we have.
Um, we, well, the last time we had a housing grant was two thousand, I want to say nineteen. I think they were five-year grants, and they've just fallen off. So I want to say that like nineteen was the last time we had gotten maybe eighteen, nineteen, a housing grant, so.
Generally, I mean, so we're going to invest ten thousand dollars into this. Generally, does it pay off?
It, it, it's a very comprehensive study. It comes back. It gives us what we lost and leakage, uh, where we're at as far as condition of existing housing, what, what's the, uh, footprint. A lot of this stuff plays into our comprehensive plan too. Uh, but yeah, it's, gives us an idea of, okay, what's the demand for senior housing? What's the demand for workforce housing? Um, because things are shifting. We're not seeing families of fourteen kids, or even six kids, Joe. We're saving one and two, and that does change many others. Plus, our population is showing to be aging a little bit more, so there's less jump.
And traditionally, these grants have been for housing that already exists to do improvements to it, so that keeps our, you know, our infrastructure, yeah. Keeps it looking nice, and for things like roofs and exterior and then interior improvements that are needed, so.
Right.
It's been well-used in the past, and I think it meets a need.
I think we've done so much housing too that we need to-
I think we've done so much housing too, that we need to stop now and look at what we have.
Right.
Because you can keep building, but if you don't need them, then don't build them. So I think you need to look at the availability and what the requirements are for it, so I think it's a, I know it's a lot of money, but I think it's a good use of money.
And what type of housing?
Right, right, so that we can fulfill needs, so I would make a motion that we go ahead and do.
We don't have the money available.
Yeah, we have that housing acquisition demolition fund where we put the proceeds from, um, when we, like, we sold one away to kind of the street. That's where we've been using, um, we've been using that money too for our match for the lead paint, the lead housing grants that we've had, so there is funding in there that if we do get this grant, we could utilize.
I have a motion, is, would anybody like a second? Okay. Any further questions or comments? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ryan?
And Linda? Yes.
All right. Next, we have information regarding, um, the Bon Park Shelter project, we got a quote?
Yeah. Uh, we didn't receive just one, but we were hoping to get, or, or, the contractors like to see additional quotes too, so they know if they're involved or not. But the quote came in a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, which is significantly above the hundred fifteen thousand dollars we've budgeted. So, we need to go back to the drawing board on this. Uh, part of the, the project is replacing the shelter that was damaged during tornado, but we were also discussing updating the bathroom facilities to bring in updated points. Reality is those two separate projects, and I think the bathroom portion of it also helped increase our costs, uh, for the total project. And so what we're going to do is we're gonna come back, uh, talk, I think, we need a whole meeting next week with the council, with some concepts, maybe shrinking the shelter down a little bit. I don't think it's too small, because, you know, it's not as versatile as you'd like it to be. Now, if we can get eight picnic tables underneath the shelter as opposed to four, it makes it a little bit more user-friendly than the largest shelter we have. In Terrell Park, it's used and reserved quite a bit, yet, uh, at our shelter, we have it in Tram Park. It's not as well-known, but it does get used a little bit as well. Uh, so we really want to make sure we have a significant-sized shelter that is able to host events. The other thing we'll talk about Monday night, or, excuse me, Tuesday night, was Sam on the Anderson Street project, we talked a little bit about parking lot. Well, instead of having a separate standalone parking lot, maybe we just do angled parking off the street like we have up on Sherman Avenue, by the softball complex. That allows for more parking, off-street parking, but it's still on the street right away.
But acres or Sherman?
Uh, Sherman Avenue is where the angled parking is.
Oh, gotcha.
Softball.
Gotcha, that's not what I was thinking back then.
So, we're going up that, up to Anderson? Yeah, where is our angled parking?
Basically, we'll bump the curb out, and so we'll bring a concept, we'll probably do a cost assessment for parking lot, and then also like parking, so you have.
I'd say, cause when people park, you know, with the street, it is tight.
Yeah, and so, because it is city, right-of-way, city property, we can kinda bump it in, and take up some of the city property. By doing it, the angled parking on the street right-of-way, we may not have to remove as many trees too, and that was another factor of that.
And then, with the angled parking, would we throw the one side parking on the Anderson Street?
You wouldn't need to, cause the angled parking, they'd come back out, they're just gonna go north. If we did perpendicular parking, that's where I think there's more of issue, and you take some more room, so the angled parking looks better there.
Right. That was kind of an idea, if you only go up fifty more there in that parking lot, so to say, how much more that opens everything up around there, then.
Yeah.
So you're gonna come back to?
We'll come back and talk to the council with some concepts, and revisit with you, so, what are the priorities? What are our absolutes, and where, if we have the funding available, we can live away?
Cause I agree with the, you know, making it compliant, as far as doing the bigger shelter, right? You know, I walk there every day, and there's not that many people utilizing, a lot of people walk through there, but, you know, teenagers.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, for a while there, because the shelter's been gone, but we did have, uh, roof bar, and, and there are a lot more events. So if you have something set up and designated that they can do that, we may see more events.
I think if it's bigger, you're gonna have opportunities, and then if the other ones fill that, there all, you've got another opportunity for somebody to listen to them.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we table this.
Uh, reject.
Okay, reject it, sorry.
Project the group, yes, please.
I'll tell you, we have time to.
Anybody, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. With this in mind, what this will do is the construction will, if we get it back and go after quotes again, construction will probably be by the next spring, it won't be done this fall.
Is there a way that we can figure out a way to do that all at one time, when Anderson Street gets redone?
Next year, it would all be done next year.
Instead of, I mean, if we did it this fall, then you could have.
We'll have this out of the way.
Right.
Um, it's fine, we'll work it through.
Bill?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we're on to engineering updates, so, CM, do you wanna go first?
Sure. I guess going by Anderson Street, uh, Seattle, with, with the shelter, obviously, we'll have to kinda coordinate, figure out, let's, you know, talk with Doug, parking racks to see, we'll wanna make sure that whoever's bidding Bon Park knows the street project's gonna happen, and whoever's bidding the street project knows the shelter's gonna be going up. So, we'll have to be some kinda coordination there, and also figure out, we have a timeline on, you know, how long I think this shelter's gonna take, um, and something like that, so yeah, there'll definitely have to be some coordination and back and forth with us and parking rack.
But.
Uh, and yeah, Tim kinda mentioned, parking lot will bring, go get some cost estimates put together here this week for community pool, to kinda look at the two different options of parking lot versus angled parking. And then, what was brought up about, Chad mentioned, maybe going west on about there with water mains, so I'll kinda throw some things out there. It might be a situation where just cost is not gonna prevent extending that water main beyond storm sewer, but again, with this, throw cost estimates, kinda get a rough estimate, so you guys can look at that. Got easements sent over to the city, so they'll kinda work on the next upcoming weeks, um, get those mailed out, and then, if any of you have any questions, any property owners out there, we can sit down, have meetings as needed, whereas that's kind of in the works. Light Energy started working, I think they were just kinda starting out there last week. Um, but got a couple of calls one of the day with some questions, so they're out there working along Anderson Street, have a meeting tomorrow morning with MediaCom, up along Anderson Street, they're still trying to figure out their design, figure out what we're gonna do for sure. I haven't heard for sure, but I know Lynn Stream was talking about going joint trench with the light, I don't know if that happened for sure or not, but I know that was a discussion, if that happens, that would be great, that would be one less crew out there for that. Um, that's pretty much, for me, I have nothing to ask any question for me.
No? Jason?
Here, uh, we're currently working on the check plans submitted for DOT for the Grand Avenue Trail, which is due here in two weeks. So we're gonna get those put together to submit, uh, their checklists for the next, the next iteration of reviews on that, as we continue to move forward towards, uh, the wedding in January on that project. Uh, right now, that's the only city project I've got going on at the moment, unless there are any specific questions that anyone has of me.
Uh, are you doing Caruso's?
Yeah, we've done the mass grading plan out there for that, for the excavation for the storm waters.
Awesome, I, maybe this, they're gonna have to raise that if somebody wants to.
Yep, that's where we're excavating out the detention basin, using that fill for compensatory storage of all the north.
How far up will they have to roughly?
Uh, we're looking at about, I think it's about four and a half to five feet, it'd be about the same elevation as, the floor elevations of the proposed building would be roughly the same elevation as subway, which would put it two feet above the, uh, base blood elevation. So, MPL is one, I've been struggling with trying to encourage people that are doing work adjacent to floodplains, about at least two feet, just to kinda future-proof things a little bit. But, uh, which would put it higher than the centerline elevation of East Main Street, so if there ever was an overtopping on Main Street, those structures would still be protected.
Oh. Well, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason. All right, Jim?
Yeah, one thing that's come up, uh, talked, I've been made aware, there've been some concerns about exotic pets and animals in public, downtown, and it bothers some people. So what I, I told the mayor that I would just kinda go out and look at what other towns are doing, so you get, so you kinda see what the choices are. And there's not a, a lot of variety, but there's basically two ways towns have done it. One is that they'll do a list of animals that they're gonna, uh, regulate. And they'll say venomous snakes, venomous spiders, and they'll, they'll say snakes of any kind to a certain length. They're, they're not gonna regulate garter snakes and that kind of thing, but, so they'll, they'll make a whole list, everything from raccoons all the way down, and see. Now, some towns will take that list and make you register the animal, and it can never, and it can't leave your premises. That seems like an awful lot of work, and I don't know, you know, the towns I saw doing it, I can't, I'm not sure how they police it, these are small, Marengo does that. So, the better course seems to be
Yeah.
that you can prohibit certain animals in public places. And then you can list the length of the snakes and all the, the things that you wanna limit that trend, but what I think also makes sense, and I haven't seen a lot of this in the ordinances, it's not against the law to have it in a public place if it's in a sealed container or a cage, I mean, how, otherwise, how do you ever get the animal to your house?
Right.
Uh, so, and none of the code sections I saw really provide that, but I would recommend, if we're looking to regulate publicly, uh, exactly, pets in public, that we, uh, design some sort of, where they're in an approved cage or an approved, uh.
Or on an leash or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, cause it just, otherwise, you're making criminals out of everybody taking them to the vet.
Right. Right.
Uh, so that, the question would be, and what I would suggest, to have some examples, ordinances of what things they list, just to take a look at, what things would be included in their regulation. I mean, a lot of it's pretty common sense, uh, monkeys, things like that, but then, how you define, uh, all like, uh, tarantulas or things like that, people that they like, you can apparently have them de-venomed. And, uh, this says, I don't know how you do that, but apparently you can.
Yeah.
So it says in these ordinances, doesn't matter, you just, uh, keep it in the box.
Right.
So, if that's something you're interested in, I'll have, uh, I'll make copies of this, I have it here, and let them get it out to you to look at the list. I'm not recommending the actual ordinance we're giving, more of the definition of what animals they regulate.
Okay.
So, let me ask you this, like, cause I've had people ask about the ones that wanna walk around town. If you own a flower shop or a hardware store, whatever, sold dishes, can you allow them into your building, man?
I think you got the right, I, I think you have the right to allow.
Private individual, private ownership building?
Just an example I always give, uh, a lot of times we have some heated things go on in my office, you know, with divorces and stuff. So I don't allow any guns in my office, because it's not a very fair negotiating thing, you have one person with a gun, and a mediation. And I've had people sit there and scream at me, I have a, I have a right to care, to a firearm, you do, but your right ends at my door. So, private property, people can do what they want with it, but when they're on the street, is what I would be regulating with this one.
Actually, I had somebody asking, well, he came in my store, I said, I believe you have the right to not allow that.
Yeah. You have the right to refuse any patron, I mean. Unless you do it for, uh, prohibited purposes, yeah.
So is this something you guys would like to have, um, continue to look at?
Now, I'd love for you to make a better list, whether they just give you the ordinance out, or you put this into a, a list of suggested ordinance like that.
Okay, yeah.
Then you can mark it out. The one I'm suggesting, I don't actually see an example of anywhere, it's kind of a hybrid of ones I saw. But I think it makes more sense to just say public, and, and you're not telling the store owner what they can and can't do.
Right.
Would, would we be impacted, or would, would there be a consideration that somebody said it was their emotional support?
Or service, yeah.
Yes.
I wanna see the doctor's letter.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
But there again, you could still ask him if it was an exotic lizard or whatever.
Well, they can have it with them, they just have to have it in a cage.
Yeah, they can have it with them, so.
I, I mean, I would like to go to the no exotic animals downtown. Just in the downtown business district, I would like to see us go that direction, just prohibited altogether.
Does that mean that the guy that walks around the bear on his shoulder isn't allowed downtown?
And there's also a pet shop downtown.
No, I mean, yeah, but it's a, a block, I'm saying, the main and Franklin, we're just going down.
If it's in a cage, it's a.
Yeah, you can't really.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's more, we have a leash law for dogs and so forth, it should be the same thing, if you're gonna take the animal out, it should be somehow you've got control, yeah, restraint.
And, and I think it has to be the whole town.
Right.
I'll use an example, let's say someone has a white rat on their shoulder, and they're walking down the street, and I'm trying to walk my friend's dog. It doesn't matter if it's downtown, there's gonna be a break going on there, folks, and I don't wanna be responsible for it. So, because of that, I think it's, it's a safety situation, no matter where you are in town, and so I would say the whole town is supposed to just, you understand why I'm saying that?
Right, yeah.
Because I think that is a huge consideration and problem where it could exist, so.
Okay.
I'll put it together, knowing that I'm expecting you to mark it up and have your suggestions.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, that's all I have.
Cause we're, we're, our next, maybe the hole's gonna be the second, right?
Uh, yes, Tuesday, the second, because we're holiday.
Okay, all right. And did you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jim, very much. Uh, Tim?
Yeah, so if you had a chance to review the minutes from the airport committee, we did have a request on Memorial to help us put a covered porch on the welcome center out of the airport, so the airport committee is working on putting together plans, um, looking to use the memorial funds to cover the material costs and donate labor to cover construction and stuff like that, so, uh, we will come to you with the design, or they will come to you with the design once they have finalized the council can approve it or reject it, whatever it is, based on, because I think they're looking to attach it to the east side of the building where there's currently a decorative concrete patio.
Yeah.
Burning that, uh, keeping the table and the chairs there that were donated, or stools, whatever, but attaching on the roof line and replacing that roof, maybe in, all tiny altogether, so you have an open-air covered patio. Uh, they're working on that, along with, uh, getting plans together for, as you mentioned, in twenty twenty-six. Uh, right now, they have talked to Friends of Army Aviation regarding having them come back up with it, being on heavy helicopters and doing rides again. So, uh, getting pretty excited, they also wanna do an open house and reintroduce the public to the airport and what goes on out there. Iowa Native Cities has their annual conference next month, on the seventeenth through nineteenth in DuBois. Uh, Erin and I are registered, if anyone else has any interest, let us know, Thursday is the full day, Wednesday's a half-day, usually Wednesday afternoon, evening, and then Friday is just Friday morning. So if you're interested, let us know, and then just give a heads up, I am looking to take some vacation time, September third through the fifth. Uh, so I'll be here for the community hall meeting, and getting stuff ready for the next council meeting, but then take off Wednesday through Friday.
Any questions there, Tim?
Um, as far as the holiday come rolling around, normally we get our packets on Tuesdays. Should, should we expect Wednesday instead of Tuesday? Give you guys a little bit of time with the holiday, or are you guys gonna be able to get it on Tuesday?
We're gonna. We're gonna get it, no, so that way it's all.
Anything else, Tim?
Nope.
All right, Erin?
Nothing.
Uh-oh. What did you do Sunday?
Yeah, talk about that.
Oh. I'm so, so deprived, we had the hero hustle on Sunday, it went really well, weather was perfect. We had, um, two hundred, maybe a little bit more athletes participating, uh, everything went really well, um, you know, we were fortunate to get a lot of help from our, not only our police department, but the state patrol and the county law enforcement, and a lot of the county fire departments come in, as well as Maine Fire Department, to help patrol grow. It's the, um, the local ATV, UTV club is a huge help in managing intersections, um, so everything went really well, it was a great event, and, um, brought people from all over into town, Tim, I think noted that in his memo, but, um, even had a couple from Florida here for the, for the event, so. It was, it was, it was our tenth anniversary, anniversary, and went really well. And to date, from the donations and the race event, we've given seventy-seven thousand dollars back to Delaware County Fire, ambulance, uh, law enforcement, so. from the donations and the race event, we've given seventy-seven thousand dollars back to Delaware County Fire, ambulance, uh law enforcement. So I won't have the exact numbers for this year yet until all the bills come in, but it should be another really good year.
Awesome. Good job.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Erin? And Chief Davis had to do some stuff with his kids tonight, so he's not here tonight. Uh, Brian?
I will be on vacation from the twenty-sixth through the seventh.
Twenty-sixth of August?
August.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's a campsite. Numbers start to come out.
And then uh the other thing I had is I've had several uh citizens ask me if um the K nine unit, your tent, Wendell's tent is compliant.
It is. Uh, it's the same vehicle that's sold to DOT or State Patrol and everything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, the driver's window and the passenger window in front row are appliance level. Once you get past that, they can be darker.
They can be darker, but I guess the complaint is you can't see an individual in there as they go by. That's why they were out.
Yeah, no, these are, these are compliant. These are vehicles that Harold Chevrolet sells to all the state patrol and other entities in the state for police vehicles.
Yeah.
What question? Okay, Linda? Mary Ann? Joe?
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring up September seventh is the newbie interple. And uh normally I wouldn't promote somebody else's deal, but there's a local gal that I graduated high school with that uh battled cancer, I think still to battling cancer and benefits for her. So no, uh Keisha Monahan all the way through school, Keisha Bach instead of now. So I just wanted to bring a little awareness to that. Uh, hopefully, hopefully more of us Manchester residents can swing out there and help our family, so to say. The other thing I wanted to bring up was uh, run down the brush dump, wide off. And uh, there's a house on South Brewer Street. I don't want to use the person's name, but he put, put a lot of work into there and it's really looking nice. So I just wanted to kind of give him a pat on the back. So to say, I'm putting all that work into the house, so.
He was a little in bitty house. They make it look really nice.
Yeah, I mean, when he started working on it, I was like, dude, what are you doing? And then when, now you can see it. And I'm like, oh, boy, you got that. It looks, it looks really nice.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, Bill?
Uh, I too will be gone. I will not be here for the meeting at all. I thought I was going to be, but I have to be in Boone Tuesday night. So I'll be gone the second through the seventh. Eighth, but I'll be back on the eighth. So I too will be out of town. Sorry. Someone must have jobs. Wow. I'm going down the cover for state fire convention. You guys want to know what it's like next year? It's exactly right. You're, you're our consultant.
So you're representing the city?
Representing the city.
There you go. There you go.
And the golf course. Lots of notes, lots of pictures. No pictures. Lots of notes. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, I shared with Tim, wherever we are, I had a couple of citizens who live up on North Fifth Street that um let me know that they were disappointed to see some realty signs that were set at Terrell Park and at Oakland Cemetery. Thought that was disrespectful to have them in front of the cemetery and so forth. And I told them that we've each, there's, they're starting to creep in again.
Yep, uh, city staff will, will go out and, and start pulling signs that are in the right way, they're, they're illegally. You may get phone calls. Uh, but again, they can have talked to staff, but they are, they are not permitted in cities randomly. Uh, they can put them, if there's a really sign, they can put them in the front yard if the house is for sale. Uh, but they should not be putting in the intersection with arrows and stuff like that. And the reality is there's been some gun shows, uh garage sales, other things that are attached. The telephone that, it does make the telephone tackier, so.
I was telling them, I remember we had Donna, you were with them, when we had those people come in and they did a walk through town and told us, you know, what they saw, one of the things was we have way too much signage. They thought that really
Is there anything we could do where like we confiscate the sign and then make them pay like fifty bucks to get it back?
Uh, we can just issue
Well, we could issue a
Municipal citation.
Yeah. I mean, right. I mean, I think at this point, time, I mean we don't have to create anything. We just have to issue the citation. Just start charging, fine them, breaking the law, just like a traffic citation.
Yeah.
Anyway, but um that and then uh wanted to congratulate everybody on the hero hustle. That was one of my notes for today. Um, that's just what you do for our community for that and to support those people who put their lives on the line for us. It's very, very much appreciated. And I also too will be gone. I am leaving on the fourth and I will be back on the tenth. I was gonna go to Boston, so um if anybody's looking for me. Um, so I will be here for the committee as a whole meeting, but I will not be here for the council meeting. Yeah. Okey dokey. Um, and there's nothing else, I don't think. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I hope you have a good rest of your week. School has started, so be safe watching those little kids off the street. And I will take a motion and can go a second for Mary Ann. That we are adjourned, and we are adjourned.